All right, let's start.
Okay, we'll call to order the January tenth meeting of the Cold Spring Planning Board. We haven't been together for awhile. Chair's remarks. First thing we have is that member Rose is not gonna be reappointed to the board. She decided to decline. So three-year appointment, she's busy with stuff at work and we really appreciate her service. And so she will not be reappointed. We have an open slot, but of course we have an alternate member as well, Dave Marion, who is recovering, still dealing with a cold tonight, so he's not here. But I think we're fine with the alternate. And then we'll look for, you know, just in good time, we'll look for a permanent member. So, but again, we thank Judith for her service. It's, she's very helpful, came with a good background and was very helpful when we were actually having a lot of trouble getting volunteers. The environment is better at this point, so hopefully we can continue to do that. So approval of minutes. We have, the only ones left to approve right now is the ten twenty-five minutes. If you guys, you probably should review them again because it's been awhile. Can you just share us that here? Or actually, I can do this one here. You can put that, I'll plug it here. Minutes, ten twenty, eighteen. I'm seeing my stuff here on this.
Through this, right here.
Okay, so please have a talk with the meetings, representatives. This looks good. Advocate John Jones. Okay, so applicant to submit devised plans including bulk zoning conformance. It was site plan and seeker, so I'll send this over to. Planning board reviews, zoning setbacks. Cold Spring Fire Company for review and comment. Just as we're covering this, I don't think that's the way we'll do it, we'll discuss tonight, but I don't think, I don't think we'll send the plans to the fire department. It's kind of a catch-22. If they were to say they have an issue, but yet something needs code, it's not a good road to go down.
But it meets code.
Yeah, meets state code. So I think what would be, the better way to handle that would really be to, if the building inspector believes that the single means of egress, right, you know, it's a single front door, no back door for the first floor guests, is met by fully sprinkling in the building, I'd like, I think this board should see that in writing from the building inspector. Because obviously that's the code enforcement officer.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll, we had originally discussed as a board submitting it to the Cold Spring Fire Company, but I think that kind of, I don't think that's the best avenue for the village to go down. So, but obviously it stands for the minutes, that is what we set. Second floor addition, need for side yard setbacks waiver. I'm not sure we're actually doing this right, frankly. I want to talk to John first about this. You know, it's considered increasing a nonconformancy when you have a side yard and then take, you know, take a wall above it. I'm not entirely convinced we've been, you know, that that's correct. So I'd like to get John's opinion, although I think he has said that it is correct. But regardless, you know, it's fine in the minutes and they're not doing that anyway. So we don't need the answer tonight. John is available by phone, I spoke to him this afternoon. Avenue's on our land, under current porch seating area, there are complaints to purchase at Village Board, purchase advised, function is an issue. Purchase designated seeker type two, it's actually type one, which has now changed because seeker just changed. As of January one, planning board to assume lead agency, that's correct. Anything in, prior to January one, anything in the historic district or even adjacent to the historic district had to be a type one, which requires a full coordinated review across all boards. I think the state, you know, has probably figured out that that's a little bit cumbersome for, you know, for municipalities to use coordinated reviews on anything that comes into a, or even adjacent to a historic district. So as of January one, this application would be type two exempt. So there's no need, so, but the meeting, the minutes are right. Public hearing tentatively set. I don't know that, the public hearing wasn't tentatively set, it was discussed. It was discussed, but obviously none of the conditions were met.
Oh, right, well, we had aimed for that date based on the request of.
So I think really it's possible public hearing, earliest date, earliest date twelve thirteen. Where business none, motion adjourned, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Do you have a second? All in favor? Very good, great. Okay, so the minutes for ten twenty-five eighteen are adopted as amended. Thank you, sir. All right, let's, where am I here? supportive members, any reports? Been a long time, how's everybody's lives going?
I've nothing to report.
We've had no business? It's been very quiet, there's a few things that are kind of out there. Applications, you know, one of them, there's another one as well, but they haven't come to this board yet, so.
We've been watching, people watching this building.
Take shape.
I'm sure it's.
Beautiful, they're doing a beautiful job. Beautiful job. All right, so correspondence, we did have correspondence, I do not have it. The next-door neighbor one twenty-six main that sent in a letter to the village clerk. I'd asked for a copy of that, it wasn't in the mail. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to talk about it, or if you want me to just wait, I'd like to get it into the public record if you're comfortable, if you're not, I.
No, no, it's okay, I, I almost forgot. So it was just a letter, a copy of a letter that we had sent to Bill Florence just saying that our site was safe enough for Jimmy to come in and do work, but an access agreement needs to be signed and, you know, all the conditions met for the agreement for that, for them to come and work.
Because they have to perform work right along, onto a property, right?
And we hadn't heard from them regarding that agreement. And we also had included a little perbing detail that we were proposing to them at the juncture of the two buildings, just something we thought was a good idea and when he was ready for his project, if he wanted to talk about it. So that was all that was included in that.
Okay, all right, great, thank you very much. Great. All right, so that was the correspondence we had, and I was aware that it existed, but unfortunately it wasn't in the packet. So, oh, I had this under new business, couldn't be more wrong. One twenty-four Main Street, which is tax map forty-eight dot eight-two parcel forty-seven, located in the B-one national historic districts, it's Silver Spoon, Bed and Breakfast, an application for change of permitted use and interior alterations per one thirty-four subsection one thirty-four-nine of the Village Code, change of permitted use from restaurant to hotel. Ten rooms is the total now, down from twelve from the original application. We got a change of application from the twelve rooms to ten that we received on December twenty-seventh. So that's what we're looking at now. There was communication back and forth about what we needed, we have some of it, but not all of it. We'd asked for a site plan. So obviously a site, this is, that's what we do is site plan review and approval, so it's not great that we don't even have a site plan. I mean, it's nice to see construction documents and look at schematic designs and stuff, but it's not really necessary for our board. It's good to see to kind of understand the interplay between buildings. But site plan is especially important here because of several things, right? You have the ingress and egress, whether or not there are any encroachments on neighboring properties because everything is so tight. And then really the bigger kind of overarching issue in my mind is the village-owned stoop in the front. Then there's also the seller access that goes through that stoop, right? And then, which I believe you're gonna have to interrupt or somehow alter to then create ADA access, accessible, accessible access to the building.
It does require ADA access. As an existing structure, as an existing storage structure, which has designation because it's in the district, ADA access is not required in remodeling of that building. I already discussed that with Greg Warner, we've been talking for a lot of times on this, as well as the, we mentioned before about the single exit, and that's allowed also because the distance is less than seventy-five feet for the travel. It's a whole table, a lot of tables. They do have egress out of the windows and out the front, so Greg.
So you, I'm sorry, you're.
I'm Lady Muro, I'm with Jimmy to design it.
And you're an architect, or?
No, I work with the architect and the design professional, I basically do the job and work and all the labor.
Okay. Okay. So we'll go through that. But it is, it is the architect's opinion that even with a full remodel of the building, he doesn't have to bring it up to ADA.
That's correct.
I'm not sure that's right, it's never been my experience, I do a lot, you know, I manage a lot of properties. And we're under plan review, we're required to bring it up, especially once you spend a certain amount of money, once you, you know, once you do a certain amount of work. So. So your current thinking is you're going to do nothing to the front, right? Because I know that you finished with the HDR. Yeah, I know you finished with the HDRB last night, right?
Yes, the front remains unchanged, except for this one door, which is currently, I don't even know the style, but it's gonna be replaced to match this front door here.
Can I ask, though, just, it's a public use building, it's a hotel. And you don't have any interest in making it accessible to?
Well, I gotta, I do a lot of things, I don't remember if we have this here, but. Yeah, I think that this bath is ADA accessible. And this, this might be tight for ADA accessibility, but I think we may do it as well.
The transition, yeah.
We would have, the hallway would make it, if we had modified if Greg says so, but Greg's already looked at the plan several times and said we're okay, good to go. So if he has any objection, I can just make some changes.
Okay.
It won't be a big deal. But it's my understanding that, with Greg, that it's okay the way it is.
Okay. What is the current status of the purchase of the stoop property from the village?
I have no idea, that's something between Jimmy and his attorney have built.
Right, but we, but obviously we're doing site plan review and it has to be a condition of the site plan approval. I would think we would make it, I would probably make it a condition on signing the site plan. I wouldn't sign off until we saw that that went forward. Because obviously if you need to make any modifications to that, if we set aside the ADA access, I assume you can do the property without touching the stoop, you would just, you would leave it as is with the fencing?
I would assume so.
Am I to presume that's what you showed the HDRB last night that they approved?
Yes, they did.
Just the existing facade? Okay. Yeah, so I mean, obviously if you're within your rights, you're within your rights. I mean, it would be nice to see that, you know, a hotel could serve any customer, but, but if you're within your rights, that's, what's that?
Build for.
Okay, so we'll, I think probably what we would do for that, so the, the single point of egress, right, and the, and no requirement for bringing it up to ADA, it comes from Greg.
From Greg.
Okay. So I think, I think it would be in the board's best interest to get that, to get an opinion from Greg in writing. I don't know if you, if you want to request that?
Sure, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Hey, we're in.
Really apologize.
Okay.
I thought everything was settled.
Do you want to confirm with John first?
With who?
With John first, about the ADA compliance, or do we just?
No, I wouldn't be a, yeah, no, I think it would be, it'd be more code enforcement. Our, you know, our code enforcement officer and what his opinion is with respect to ADA access and ingress and a single point of egress.
I thought the trigger was, I thought the trigger was the change of use.
How so?
I thought that if there was, I thought that the change of use triggered the requirement to update the ADA. Because the, because there are all these facilities within the buildings that are ADA compliant, but it doesn't.
It has not, it's not been my experience in construction, and I, you know, I manage about twenty-two properties, you know, that, you know, for our company, that, you know, once I touch it, I own it and I gotta start bringing it up to code. You don't touch it, and a lot of times you've decided not to touch it, because it gets complicated. Even in a building in the city that I worked on, a private project, it was a limestone townhouse, even though the doors couldn't be made ADA accessible because it was historic structure, everything else had to be made ADA accessible, and the entrance had to be, had to be an assisted entrance, right, which basically meant there was a sign on the door that said, you know, if you, if you're trying to get into the building, you know, because in a, if you remember in brownstones in the city, the doors are very, very close together, so, and they're not that wide. You can fit a wheelchair through them, but you couldn't swing one open and get the next one open in time. So it's called an assisted entry. So that's been my experience, and that's New York State building code, we're still in New York State. So I don't know, but that's, you know, obviously it's gonna go with whatever code enforcement says, and with ever, and there's an architect signing off on this project that's actually gonna stamp drawings?
Design professional's engineer, he's a P.
A P, so he's gonna stamp drawings and take ownership of the code complacency. Okay. All right, so I think if you, if you guys, and if we could make sure that you take a complete list of what you need, because we've been, we keep kind of going down the road of, you know, we don't know what you need, we don't show what you need, I'm getting calls at home, I'm getting emails, I mean, this is pretty straightforward, you know, stuff. We need a site plan, right, to kind of show the building on the site.
We sent you a survey with the site, with the building on the site.
When is this?
The first plan, the first time we did it, we sent, I sent it, and also, I also sent it the second time, but it's on sheets that are, you have to glue together, which is a copy of the same survey that we sent before.
We haven't seen the survey, this is something that just came in. This is dated December thirty-first, but this just came in, and of course the clerk did not stamp it when it was received. I think this was just received, I got an email from the clerk that I think was yesterday. Yeah, was not in time for the agenda, but I wanted to put you guys on, only because this just keeps going on and on.
We appreciate your accommodations.
So it's this.
Now, the original of that, I believe I sent, but maybe not, in the first, in the first go-round.
No, you didn't send that in first round.
No, we haven't seen the survey.
Okay.
Because that's what we were asking for, and you were asking if we needed one, actually, at the last meeting.
Okay.
And we had said it just didn't necessarily need to be updated, but we hadn't seen anything. What is this, one story? Okay.
Since then, Glenn has surveyed the front porch.
Oh, for the purchase? Okay. Is he gonna update this?
We didn't ask him.
Or just a section of it?
Yeah.
So what is the status of the purchase of the property?
Village asked us to get it surveyed, so that they know how many square feet it is. There's a formula for square feet.
Right.
Picks figure.
A dollar, right.
Whatever that pick's dollar is, times the square feet, we're gonna pay. I don't know when it's going to be, they want two thousand dollars for the lawyer to come and do almost nothing.
I don't think that's true, I think they want two thousand dollars for escrow.
Yeah, right.
And then anything that happens will be escrow. Nobody's, I don't think anybody's saying that they're spending two thousand dollars.
It's nervy, makes me nervous.
It's escrow. You get back the difference.
As you, as you know, I mean, the escrow, you know, the escrow amounts are set by resolution, by legislative bodies. They're not, they're not, you know, they're not just something to run at a wall. So I mean, if that's what they need, that's what they need. If you want to move this forward, then you need to fund the escrow.
They'll do that.
But I don't believe they spend two thousand dollars on attorney fees on a transfer. I don't think they ever have, but I think that's the escrow amount. What's that?
From your lips to the Lord's ears, just make sure that that's, hopefully that's the case.
Is it, is the survey itself sufficient, or do you need a site plan?
Well, we need to, we need to see a site plan just to show, because this is, well, and this is obviously different now, because obviously one twenty-four, I mean, one twenty-six rather, has opened up a walkway. You're also gonna show, I would imagine, what are gonna be, last night, is Greg asking for egress windows?
We have egress windows.
So, and that's, I assume, is along one twenty-six and then the?
No, we changed that. None of the egress windows open up on any joint.
Those are all blind, those rooms, it's all flat. But that's in two thousand.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, egress windows where, that don't open up onto properties, just the front?
No. Well, one egress is a door, which is the front door that's there now. The existing front door becomes, serves one room.
Right.
So this door is egress for this, and the size of the door does not require an operating window, it has a door. It only needs the door.
Right, right, understood.
With the light and, right here, with light and ventilation requirements. These, it's all convoluted, but we had to do this in order to get everybody to the back, and all of our egress now is out the back and not out this side at all.
Well, no, it's not out the back, you have the front door too.
Yeah, right, right, this is the egress, but you were talking about egress windows. The windows all empty onto Jimmy's property, nothing empties onto anybody else's adjoining property.
You're not even doing windows here anymore, though?
No, no more windows on that side.
So this is one twenty-six.
Right, that's one twenty-six, it's five feet away, so.
This is what they're saying, here, no more windows at all. So they got the back here on this, and so.
This is, this is on the wall that would be adjoining property, but that one's not required for egress, that's just for light and ventilation. This one is the egress window. And Jimmy's property runs around this thing here. It wasn't my first choice, but like Greg said, he said it's very creative. We had to get creative because we weren't allowed to use this portion here. And we also proposed a plan where we would have had residential-style windows here, which would have matched the ones up front, replacing these storefronts, but the historic review didn't want us to.
Change the front.
Change the storefront, so here's what we ended up.
I'm a little bit confused when I look at this, I'm not sure how I enter the in.
Over here. This is open. You come in here and make a left and you go down from here.
Very interesting, okay, that wasn't immediately clear.
So that is, if we look at the front here, you are actually getting in from here.
Right, and this is only for the one room, correct.
And then walk backwards, that's, that's what they're saying. And then the exit is back here, and then there will be no windows on this side because that's one twenty-six. Because that's, that's.
That's correct.
And is this, this door, I'm just, so this is, is this, this is just for light and air, this window?
No, this is egress because this is Jimmy's property, so we can come on Jimmy's, if I can.
Yeah, sure.
Jimmy's property comes down like this.
Okay.
And then, like this here.
So this is the egress for this room?
This is egress, this is egress, this is egress, this is egress.
You enter room.
This is light and ventilation only, this is light and ventilation only.
You enter room one from the exterior of the building.
That's correct, that's this one up here.
From the street.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then others come back from the side door here and go in, and then go to their different places. That's why you're looking at this there.
I think we're gonna have to put those little yellow feet on the floor for people to.
The old goal.
How, and is there a reason there's no window, so that, why is the window here not like, I don't know?
Because, um.
Sorry. Oh, because the, the other building?
Yeah, I have a picture of here somewhere.
The side, there's a side view where you can see the.
Yeah, the party wall or something.
The profile.
Yeah, see, that's the.
What's our obligation?
Pizza building over there. And the historical review board wanted this window, you could have put it, you know, over here.
I mean, it's an aspirate use. You know, I mean, it's a use in the V-one.
Even though it's on the side.
I guess this.
El Masco's change of use.
Can barely be seen from the street, so they wanted that to be as nice as possible. Yeah, as possible.
Got it.
And there's no, I, yeah, I'm not familiar, but there's no code requirement for the egress or the natural lighting.
Would have touched the conference.
Because it's kind of, it's feeding the hallway, I know, I know out of duress, but it's considered part of it.
A service station to it.
You might not need shades.
Yeah, I don't think it would save some money, no, I know. Greg was the first one that said, well, this is pretty creative, I said, if you give me no choice, I'll work that out.
And the recommendations in them.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're supposed to, yeah. But I don't know what would be in there that would be relevant to.
The this?
Yeah.
Accessing, like having, I think, the, the access for the hotel? Or like having, so the first floor and the having, now that the, this has been redesigned, the building is communicate, the first floor of the building communicates with the street as a bedroom, not a.
Storefront.
Not storefront.
I don't think we have anything in our code.
No, 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 I don't think we do, I just, I know that, because I remember that was a discussion when the concrete plan was being prepared.
Like a hallway to come in.
Do you want to review it? I mean, it could.
The retail, the retail uses.
Room four.
I think that.
Did you take a look at it, or you're?
No, I'm just remembering, but I'm.
Yeah, I mean, take a look at it, because we don't.
Only because this is, this is something that I, this, this, this provides for communication with the street.
It changes it very much, I mean, when you look at Butterfield Square, now it's all whited out, right? You know, it looks, it, you know, a lot of municipalities will put into their code, you can only obstruct a certain percentage of the glass, right? To keep it, you know, but that's not in our code, so, but it should be. Because the more, you know, you really change the rhythm of the street, the interaction of the people with the street on a, you know, at the store level, by not having that, but currently we don't have anything, so.
I think the El Masco was a different kind of situation.
They're all different.
They're all different, yeah.
It was really different. So build a site plan thing is something that you've got to get together with the, I think Glenn had to do it.
Well, normally, I don't know, I don't know if it's Glenn from Beadie and Watson? It would be, because the site plan is usually prepared by the design professional. And you just incorporate the survey because you're kind of giving different information, right? That's my understanding.
Yeah, you don't need a survey, or it doesn't need, you don't need to take a survey, yeah.
When I prepare, when, when we do projects that we have to file, we usually use the survey and then kind of know what is required for whichever board is requiring.
Yeah, I mean, the survey's used as backgrounds, right, to show you where the meets and bounds are.
I'll do it, I mean, it doesn't make a difference to me, as long as we get it done, as long as we know what we're doing. I don't want to, I don't want to make Glenn retire any sooner than he's going to. He's not, he's not, he's, the only thing is he did this, he's done a survey which is there, but it's a survey, he's a surveyor, and they have engineers in the place. I'd rather you guys do it. Really, not gonna be a lot of difference, I mean. I know. This thing, the S-bus, sits on, right. Survey, pretty much, yeah.
So it fills the entire lot, edge to edge, there's no encroachments?
Left to right it does, if you're looking at the front, left to right until you get to the back. And then that. There's space in the back. There's space in the back around the, around the little addition in the back.
No, no, I'm saying, but where the structure is.
Yeah.
That sits on the boundary.
Pretty much sits right on the boundaries. True, that part of your observation is absolutely right.
Is there anything projecting off the building, air conditioning units, anything there?
There were. Before, yesterday, these two. Uh, before, yesterday, uh, these two units which are existing right now were hanging over the pizza parlor lot. But they're being moved to this indent over here. And so they'll not only not be seen, which the historical committee liked, they'll also be entirely on Jimmy's property.
Those are outdoor condensing unit, condensing units for a split system?
Yep.
So the, so I assume the acoustics are good? I mean, they, they must be very low.
I mean, it's supposed to be low. I mean, it's, you know, for residential use, basically.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so where are they going to be? They're going to be in back?
If you look at the, um...
I'm looking at the...
See the window stair on it?
Yes.
They're gonna be on top of the window and to the side of the window.
They're gonna, I'm sorry, they're gonna be on the back or this?
On this side here, yes, this side. So one is going to be here and one is going to be here.
Is that... See, that's the whole point of a site plan, is that we don't know, we don't have any, we don't, we don't understand the relationship of the stairway to the boundary, right?
Stairway pretty much comes right on the boundary, the, the left side of the stairway. And it stops short of the boundary by about three feet in the back.
In the back. Now, I understood that when we were reviewing the property to the right, 126, was that the stairka, the stair was, was encroaching the other property?
There was one, one drawing that showed that, that was, I think, um, wasn't encroaching, but at the bottom of the stairway, if you were gonna continue to walk, you'd walk onto the other property. There's now a fence there, it's gonna be a fence.
I need to interrupt there. Glenn did a survey for us, a new survey of the property. And the stairs are over the property line. So are the propane tanks. And there are pieces of the building that have been constructed out that are over the property line on the side. And that's a brand new survey that was done by Beatty and Watson.
When was that done?
You have it in the file.
Okay, unfortunately, they didn't pull my files out, but I'll pull that out.
It was done in the last year.
Okay, so it was part of your application?
Right.
Okay, great. You guys have any plans to address that or what?
We don't have any plan to address the business of...
You gotta take that tank off, I'm sorry. You gotta take the two tank off.
The probing?
Yeah, I haven't sketched it in a while.
There's a, the line, the structures and the, and the boundary line were askew. Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay. And there's nothing that we've been, that we've done and can do, other than take the building apart and move it over to conform with the existing building line that's been there since, I don't know when the building was built.
Yeah, so I think that's, I think that's why we need a site, an updated site plan. You know, just to kind of show you, show us where this building is. Obviously, you know, the planning board doesn't get involved, you know, in neighbor, you can't get involved in neighbor disputes. But certainly, we don't want to be approving work that isn't occurring on land you don't own, like the stoop in the front. And then this, you know, I also, when you say the air conditioners are going against this wall, is this wall adjacent to the lot line or is that set in?
No, it's set in.
So you're not, you're not projecting onto neighboring property?
Are they going to be under the stairs?
They'll be under the stairs.
But now, right now, on these illustrations, it does appear that the stairs are...
Flush with the...
They're flush with the building?
Stairs are flush with the building, correct.
Right, but are they, I can't tell, is this to scale?
It is.
This looks like, this has the appearance of an incredibly narrow, I mean, it looks like the stairs are, these are half stairs.
They are now or then, they would be if they were new, but they're also in existing condition. And that was done under the previous remodel, which is why they were...
They are pre-existing non-conforming, right?
Yeah, that would be the best way to say it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
But they were allowed to be rebuilt non-conforming?
When were they rebuilt?
They were rebuilt, I think they were...
You said it was part of a prior, the, the last renovation of the hotel rooms?
They were already there. So that was approved the way it was, under the approval that was given in 2014.
What is the width of these stairs?
I think it's 32 inches, I'm not exactly sure. Yeah, 36 is the minimum.
Yeah.
Can I ask where they are on the plan?
So, if I can, and again, this is the outside of the building. So one is gonna be here and one's gonna be above.
Who's AC units?
The units. And where are the stairs?
If this is just scale, do the AC units fit?
So, but then it's 26 inches.
I think what happens is, I, I think...
So the stairs are 26 inches?
Well, that's how we measured it.
Are supposed to be, oh, here.
I think there's, I think there's, as far as I can tell, there's a 32 inch, whatever the width of the staircase is, there's a setback from this edge, from this plane to this, to this wall.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Right, but the AC units, but the...
So they look like they're going in this airspace.
Available width here for these, I mean, these...
Under the stairs.
They only pop out 15 inches.
Yeah, but I'm, I don't, yeah, I think if they...
Here, it doesn't know that.
I don't know, no, we're not, I'm not installing it.
That's the engineer guy has to figure that out.
It looks tight, but I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what's...
The units are 15 inches front to back, yeah.
Right. No, I think she was talking about more about stacking them.
The, the width or the height, are, are they, just because we're...
So they're, um, 37 by 36, and that, that one window that shows here on this plan is actually gonna be lowered down a little bit than it is now, so that it'll fit above.
What, I'm just out of curiosity, what split system?
All right, so I think that, all right, so we have an updated parking table, so obviously the two rooms upstairs are out. So it's five and five, so it's 10 rooms total.
Yep.
Got 10 parking spaces. Obviously, you already purchased waivers for five on the last, so obviously be, the village, the planning board would be asked to consider a parking, a parking waiver for five spaces. Okay. Um, the application was updated to show that the, you know, the application was changed to reflect the, um, reduced number of rooms. So if you're not building the second story, we, I don't, we don't need, we had asked you last time for a, uh, a zoning bulk conformance table, which we didn't receive yet, but we still don't need, obviously, if you're not...
We need it now.
Well, we don't need it now, yes, so you're, yes, you're... It's working for you then.
There's more than that, I mean, the setbacks, um, the profiles, the whole thing would've been more complicated with it. And it's, in order to move this thing forward as quickly as we can, we just better not have that room. If he wants to do it at some future time, if it's worth the expense of we're doing it, then I can, you may come back. But for now, the, the idea is to get the five rooms done downstairs and to see if we can start the business.
Right, well, that's great, but just so we're clear, I mean, we haven't seen anything. We, we, you know, we have been waiting and waiting, we've been getting multiple requests, asking what, what is needed. You know, I said, the same things we've asked for. So let's make sure that we're, you know, that we're all taking notes. We're always taking notes. Your side could take notes. And just make sure, you know, I don't think that we're gonna set a public hearing without seeing this stuff yet. We haven't seen a site plan, so we don't know if the site plan is good, uh, because you haven't provided a site plan. Although we've asked for one since the beginning, because what you're doing here, as you well know as an attorney, is what do planning boards do? They do site plan review, right? We need a site plan, right? So...
We were trying to accelerate with the survey as a substitute, but Bill can...
But the survey shows somebody else's reality, in fact, it doesn't represent...
It's from 2000.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, you know, it's 18 years old, which is fine, it's a survey. I mean, the meets and bounds, I'm sure are fine. But obviously, you want to kind of show that you've got whatever you're doing, right? So if you, if, if in fact, you, you don't have to provide ADA access. I'd be interested to know why that is, so obviously, well, I think we would ask, so, let's go through what we need. We need a, we need an, we need a site plan.
Yep.
Right? We need to get the opinion...
Of the building inspector.
From the building inspector, code enforcement. On... But you now have two, you have two...
Two exits, two, two exits.
Why is that? You didn't have it at one point. Did you only have the front door and you were blocking the back door?
We only had the front door, and the way that the, the rooms were aligned, we needed to have those windows where there would be a second way out. And now we've reconfigured, or Lane has reconfigured this to, so that he doesn't have to do that. They have a doorway and a doorway, rather than a doorway and windows.
So you're still planning on sprinkling?
Oh, it has to be in order to get the single exit.
Yeah.
That's part of the requirement to bring a single exit. The entire building has to be sprinkled.
Okay. What's the single exit there? Because you have a front door and you have a rear door.
There's the front, the rear door only serves upstairs.
Yeah, you know, these are, these plans are very...
The rear door, if you look at the elevation views, it's only upstairs.
What's, what's happening right here?
That's windows.
That's a room, that long, it's a room without, with the one window.
Oh.
And...
This is downstairs.
Yeah.
That's downstairs. The only floor that we're touching is the downstairs.
So where is, so there's, there's the front door, the entrance.
They're saying the exit.
No, 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 I'm just saying that, I was, what, what I'm asking is what was happening here? And that's light and ventilation and, and egress for that room, I assume. All right, so it's a, so it is single?
Yes.
We're back to singles? Because this has kind of been, you know, it's been, you know, kind of going through a blender. And, and I'm sure that's the same for you, but obviously, you're, you know, you're, you're, you're the ones that are running the blender. So we, so we are back to a single point of ingress and egress for the first floor?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so we, we, I would like to see a written opinion from code enforcement, basically saying that, you know, that a, that for hotel, for public hotel purposes, two things, right? Even with the extent of renovation and investment in this property, that you do not need to address ADA compliance.
Does Cold Spring have its own individual billing code? Greg said you went by the state code.
Well, the state code's always gonna, is always, if, the, our code can be more restrictive, not less restrictive. No, I mean, it's, we have zoning conformance, we don't have building code.
There's not a formally adopted building code by...
No, no, God, no, oh, God, no. No, 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 we just have, you know, zoning, like ridge height and, you know, things like that, you know what I mean? But, but means and methods and the actual building code is all New York State. So, yeah, so if, if in New York State, that, a, you know, a hotel where you're renovating 100% of a floor, right?
But still less than 50% of the building.
Uh, maybe that's the difference, I don't know.
Oh, because...
Is that what you're saying?
It's still a level two alteration, and it's also considered an R1 type of structure.
Right.
It's a boarding house, transient nature for code purposes. If you want to call it a hotel, I mean, I would call it a hotel maybe, but not really, because hotels usually serve rooms and have breakfast and everything else, and they're served in the room, so this is...
Well, no, that's the stars, that's how many stars.
Well, yeah, but this is boarding house.
Kind of a two-star hotel, there's no, no onsite, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily mean it's bad, it doesn't, it's amenities, yeah.
But, um, you know, the word hotel in the code has a different connotation than like maybe somebody thinks of a hotel. You know, they think of hotel and they think of Trump Towers.
Oh, God, no.
So you're saying this is a lodging?
This is called a boarding house by the code. It's an R1, um, construction, which is a residential construction. And it's transient in nature with less than whatever the occupants were, 20 occupants or something. Transient in nature being less than 30 days at a time.
All right, so that's, okay, so...
So the code is so many, I mean, you know if you're into it every day.
Yeah, yeah.
You look here and it says, oh, you can't do this, this, and this. And then you find exceptions over here where you can do this, provided you do this, and this, and this, and this, and this, which basically just kind of incorporates...
That's what...
I think they relax the, they relax the requirement of exits and entrances when they, when you have the sprinkle systems. See, the sprinkle system seems to be an equivalent for, uh, somehow.
I think if you reference the code that is being followed on the site, on the site plan, then I think it'll take care of the question and then it'll be there. And then plus you're requesting a letter from the building inspector.
Yeah, I think we really need the building inspector to say that, look, you know, so you're saying that since you're not exceeding 50%? Obviously, it has to be at least 50% because you're doing the whole floor plan. Wait a minute.
No, of the whole build, 50, he said not 50% of the whole building?
Not 50% of the entire building is being changed.
So if the code says that, then we could, if you refer to that part of the code, then...
I think it does in here someplace that it's a level two alteration, it's in here somewhere, but I'll make it more clear on the site plan.
I'm sorry, I meant that exemption.
But wait, isn't this footprint larger than the upstairs footprint because of the kitchen bump out?
Yes, but you also have a basement in here, which is part of the total square footage. I know that because I've been through that with two other towns, Town Hudson and Town of Newburgh.
That's not a finished basement.
It doesn't have to be finished. It's still part of the footprint and it's still part of the taxable area and it's still part of the construction. Since we get taxed on it, they consider it...
Yeah, no, understood, understood. So you're, you're, you know, you're certainly supported by the code. I would hope you want to build the safest hotel possible, right?
We do, absolutely.
And that people can get in and out safely, um, and that, you know, and that obviously, that if ADA access is a possibility, it's, you know, we would, we would hope that you would consider...
Well, it was easy when the historical review board, or it was easy until the historical review board told us we couldn't use the front door in the, in the manner that we wanted to use it, that front entrance way, so...
Use it in what way?
Well, we wanted to have two rooms on either side of that front entrance. So that front entrance, well, it would've had to been...
Oh, because you were gonna board up the windows.
Well, we're not gonna board them up, we're gonna replace them with regular windows, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's removal of a storefront, I mean... Yeah, and that, that's not something that, anybody, what's that?
But we can have window on another side, maybe like between 126, 124. If we have another window, it'd be better design. Because I'll be honest with you, and I don't like design, but you know what? I gotta get it, because we can have window, we can have window, no problem.
So they actually hope there will be a window on this side facing 126, but right now, there is no window. We put 124 and 126.
We can put as many windows as we want on that side, but they could not be considered egress windows.
Yeah. All right, so, so I think then we'll, we'll have to have another meeting and then see this stuff, and then we can set the public hearing.
So for the site plan, what's required? Should we review what's required, the, the site plan is required? And showing the, usually you have to show the, um, property line and the setbacks. And we're requesting a note about, um, the exception, uh, why the exception is granted? And then, is there anything else?
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear.
I think...
Is it one or two exceptions? There's an exception for, you're saying that ADA compliance is not required, right?
Because the amount of building that's being touched.
Because only 50% or less than 50%.
Well, that plus the fact that it's considered a residential type construction. It's not considered a commercial type construction. When it's boarding, not boarding, when it's, boarding house transient nature...
It doesn't, you don't have to be ADA compliant, okay.
Under an existing, that we have an existing building.
And so that's one exception, but then there was the other one. Was there a second exception for egress?
A sprinkler for singular egress.
The egress with the second, the second door, the single exit door right there.
Right. Okay. And I think that's it. And then if every, obviously, if we, if we see these things and they're, and they're acceptable, then we'll, obviously, the parking table's fine. The updated application is fine. I had said in my email that we do not need the seeker form, so don't fill out the seeker form. I got the seeker form back, the long seeker form. So unfortunately, the, somebody spent time doing that when I said... Yeah, so as of January 1, the rules have changed for seeker. It used to be anything in a, and that's what we had discussed back in, I think it was October, was that if you want a decision before January 1, it's a type 1, which is a fully coordinated review across the boards. If you wait till January 1st, right, which you didn't want to do, but ultimately did, then it, that, that trigger isn't there, that anything inside or adjacent to a historic district triggers a type one review. So this is actually a type two exempt, so we don't need any seeker, so we don't have to do seeker, which is state inquiry.
We're all getting used to the, we're getting used to the new rule.
Yeah, well, at least it gets, well, at least it gets easier, right, I mean, it's, because there's coordinated review. We got a, we got a lot of historic district here, so I mean, that pushes up, that really pushes everything into type one. It wasn't really until I chaired the board where we started doing this, where I said, no, it's really clear in the code, that it's type one, we were exempting everything. You know, it's always better with the state to have a, have the form in there and say, we conducted seeker, right, it's better for everybody. They just changed it as of January one, that it, it isn't triggered by the, by the national or regional historic district. So it, we can, this can be type two exempt, so we don't have to go through seeker. And I think that's it. And obviously we'll take a look at those things, we'll look at the, at the, at the survey, and obviously if you, you know, if there are encroachments, those obviously need to be discussed with the neighbor, right? And obviously you don't want to increase any of those, you guys are going to have to decide, you know, what you can live with, what you can't. If it truly is a, you know, a condition that can't be remedied, then, you know, then you'll have to come up with that, but obviously we, we don't want to, we need to understand all of that, because we don't want to increase any of it, right?
Yeah.
The planning board doesn't, I'm, I'm not going to stamp a drawing and sign off on it, not knowing whether or not I'm increasing any non-conformity.
Right.
Right, so that's why we need to see the site plan.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't want to put you in that.
Right, yeah.
Position to begin with.
Yeah, don't worry about me, thank you though, but I'm in the village, I mean, it's really, that's what we, you know, that's kind of what we're here for, right?
Yeah, but we, we recognize two things, first of all, where people built, when they were building at the time that this was being built, were thinking that they were on the line, that they may or may not have been on the line, they may have, and some of it may have happened after lunch. And so that this building line measured in two thousand and eighteen didn't conform, or buildings didn't conform with the line that was made in two thousand and eighteen, but apparently was conforming to lines that were extant at the time they were building the building, because they're, both buildings are, you know, toe to toe.
Or, or whenever checked.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean.
That's also as likely as any other.
We live in a different, we live in a different, you know, in a different world now.
Maybe have a little paid due of deed research, because a lot of these old deeds have reciprocally agreements between neighboring properties that run with the land, so. I'll take a look. I might want to add in the cities, Newburgh and.
Look at it, but look, I'm sure everybody, you know, I mean, we live very close together, so we want to be good neighbors, so certainly, you know, work with your neighbor. We'll look at that, because I want to make sure that, you know, that, and certainly show us the things on the site plan, like the air conditioning units, the projections of those, where they, where they terminate.
Can I say something? I can't close my mouth, I'm sorry. How would you, I know, I, I can't, oh, okay, good, I'm not here.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Bye. Thank you.
Alright, anything else?
A certain amount of angst fills up in Jimmy and it overpours.
We've been here for months waiting for things, so I, you know, I don't got no angst, I mean.
We don't think you do, we think you're trying to be these balancers that make the weight, you know.
Yeah, no, no, look, I'm talking to people, I'm talking to friends on my cell phone, looking for, you know, what we're looking for, I mean, you know, I got, you know, I mean, that's, the fastest way to do this is to give us what we ask for and then you're done.
Yeah.
Ask anybody, right?
Yes.
You know, I mean, in older configurations.
We were just really aware that we had to get, we, we get, I wasn't.
You weren't, you weren't, because you didn't come to the meeting.
We did.
You weren't at the meeting, in fact, the last one I told Bill, would you please take notes? I said, I don't, you know. Very good, excellent, so you've got it, so, and we'll get this done, I mean, you know, bring it in, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll set the public hearing. We'll give you the blast zone, which is just the, you know, the contiguous neighbors, you got to notify to say it's a public hearing. We have a new change to the code that you gotta, you have to put a sign on the building, which I think is great.
We won't get arrested by you.
I was a big proponent of that, no, the HTRB supports it, it's a temporary sign, those are really smart, because what we're hearing a lot is people are after the fact, things are approved, and, you know, nobody reads the paper looking for legal notices, so we're going to do what.
But they don't read that part.
Yeah, well, so, you know, so obviously there'll be a, you know, a sign that basically says that, you know, the, the project is subject to a public hearing and the public hearing date, and then a, a tear sheet on it, which I think is really good, I think that's a good change that we just recently made. I had been talking about it forever, and the planning board and other boards, even on the village board, and then the, you know, the ZBA really, you know, the chair, the current chair of the ZBA really kind of championed it, and this time it finally got some traction across all boards, and now it's, now it's adopted. So we'll, we'll have those signs printed up, that'll, I think you'll be one of the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I do this in another city. But that's something the planning board does?
Yeah, the signs are, we'll provide you the sign, yeah, we'll provide you the sign, you basically just fill in the dates, so that way then, people could say, I never saw in the paper, you know, you know, and, and certainly when, you know, when there's kind of, because a lot of times, sometimes what we do is no turning back, like obviously a demolition, right? You know, there's, you know, you didn't know, well, you know, it's too late, right? And so people are saying, why, I didn't, you know, I didn't see the legal reviews, and that, that's a consistent thread that we've been hearing from folks coming in for public comment, is they didn't really know. So the, you know, the sooner you can notify folks, and anytime you get any people talking, it ends up better, right? You know, to talk to your neighbor, talk about this encroachment, talk about, you know, how you can resolve it, not talking just doesn't, you know, it doesn't make anything any better. So, yeah, so get those things to us and we'll, we can put you on the next agenda. I want to be really clear that I'm not putting you on the agenda unless I have it by Friday at noon for the, for the next Thursday. The whole point of these agendas are for public notice, is that they're not required under open meeting law and, and municipal law, but Cold Spring made them part of our code, right, at one of the prior administrations. So the point of that agenda is to get an agenda out there to show people what the topics are and they can decide whether or not they want to attend. If it's of interest to them, whether it's not, that's not required actually in municipalities, you basically have to just come to the meeting and find out what they're going to talk about. So the whole point of that, since we've committed to that, is to say, hey, Silver Spoon's on the agenda, if you have interest, we're going to see them. So I get, you know, I get the agenda to the village clerk by around noon, one o'clock on Friday for the Thursday meeting, so I need it before noon on Friday to put you on the next Thursday. If it's, you know, Friday at three, or Monday or Tuesday, then it's two weeks, right?
We have been unanimously late.
Yes, yes.
I don't know that we've ever had anything.
What's that?
So the twenty-four.
We need every two weeks, yeah, the second, the second and the third, the second and the fourth Thursday.
So that means that the eighteenth, Friday the eighteenth before noon, if, if you wanted it reviewed on the twenty-fourth, it would have to be in.
And we'll get you in, I mean, like, that's been one of the biggest things that, you know, that we've really focused on is getting people in and out, whether or not it's a business. I, I don't want to say the business applications are more important, but in many ways, it's a lot more pressing than, you know, starting your kitchen remodel, right? You know, so I mean, we want to try to get people through in, you know, three, four meetings based on, you know, whatever we're reviewing, and if things don't change much, that's, we've been able to do that.
It's, it's fair to say that every day that we don't perform is another day that money.
Yeah, 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 I mean, you, you know, I mean, there's not a whole lot really going on here, the fact that, that it's a type two exempt shows you that the state, you know, state review says there's not a whole lot going on. You know, so it's, it's, there's not a whole, it's not terribly complicated, so if the site plan has everything we want on it, the, hopefully the building inspector will get you, and it could be an email, it doesn't need to be anything on letterhead or anything, you know what, I take that back. Have it on letterhead. And just so he just says, okay, here's, here's my understanding. And then I think what we could do is as a condition, you know, if nothing's happening on the stoop, that's one thing. If, if ADA comes into play and you have to show us what's happening on the stoop and any modifications that you're making to that, then I think that could just be a condition of site plan approval, would just be that, you know, you're, that you have to purchase the stoop, right? You intend to do that, assume you can, you can resolve yourself, resign yourself to a two thousand dollar escrow deposit, not a two thousand dollar spend in my understanding. But that's what's needed to obviously get the, to get the ball rolling with the village board. And I imagine they probably set that amount by resolution, you know, several years ago when they started, you know.
It's part of the, I'm just, I'm just, my filter sometimes falls off when I see that.
I doubt they're going, they're going anywhere near that number, I mean, there's not that much to do, frankly.
That's my point.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a, it's on deposit, it's not, it's not. Alright, alright, anything else? Very good, understood. Any public comment?
I'm just curious with the renovation, I haven't been down to look at it, the stormwater management off of the building, there were some gutters that used to come down and share a outlet from my building, and I'm just curious if all that's been resolved, so the drains aren't just draining out onto the neighboring properties.
No, we haven't addressed anything with gutters, I wasn't even aware that they were doing that, what are you saying, they emptied on your property?
Yeah, you know, there was, I don't even remember what it was called, but the two buildings were about ten inches apart, and there was kind of a system where part of the roof from the Silver Spoon emptied onto Carolyn's building and went down a drain, and so I'm not sure if any of that's ever been looked at, and I see it like a big drain pipe that's just sort of emptying out to the back, and I just want to make sure that the water's being, you know, not just dumping out onto the neighbors.
Yeah, so certainly look at that, I mean, obviously you're not allowed to, you know, to, you know, to shed water onto neighboring properties, you're required to manage your stormwater on site, that was a large discussion on yours, and it's something that, you know, it's, it's difficult to do.
And we sort of have, you know, we did submit a curb in detail for alongside your building, and we're, we have all kinds of super drainage now on our site, so we're kind of willing to talk about if you needed to, working together, but I just would like to see that there was a plan for the water, not just a.
What, where the, the curbing is going where, along the side of your building?
No, we sent a detail to Mr. Florence, because.
Just came.
Well, we sent it in September, and maybe you want to take a look at it, and we're happy, it's our idea, what we think would be a good resolution between the two pieces of property. When we did our demolition, we chose not to disturb anything next to one twenty-four, so we've left a portion of our wall that was there. We need to excavate that, take it out, and we were going to pour a curb that you could kind of flash over on the side of the building, but we didn't want to do anything that, you know, might make it difficult for you to get in and do your work. So it's something that maybe you also want to look at and let us know.
So that curb would go down.
It would go along the side of one twenty-four Main Street, yeah, yeah.
On the west side. Yeah, on the west side, because that's your side.
Right.
I don't know, it's the side.
Right, so we have that alleyway and it's, the grade is a little high compared to the foundation of one twenty-four, so we just wanted some way to contain things and was an idea that the guy who does the site work came up with, and we thought it was a good one, but we didn't want to do anything until you had a chance to do your work, and, you know, it's a future thing, but it might, it might look appealing to you.
So the grade would run, I mean, the curb would run all the way down and then the grade level would be basically below that, and that curb would stop the water from going into Jimmy's, is that, is that the idea?
So what actually happens is our grade is a little higher than the foundation of the Silver Spoon, and that's kind of the problem.
Okay.
Which is why we left the wall there, yeah, so we didn't want to, we didn't want to cause water to go in. So you'll look at it and see what you think of it, maybe you'll have a better idea, and we can, you know, we're, we're not going to do anything until we can find something.
Actually, you local? My name is Woody, by the way.
Yeah, I'm, I am, yes.
So maybe I could just meet you out there one day next week?
That sounds fine.
Walk along and take a look and figure out.
That sounds fine.
Yeah, and obviously they're not, you're not doing any work that we can actually, you know, kind of control that, but obviously this is why you talk, and that's why obviously, you know, her not shedding water into you, obviously the whole, you know, the, you know, the existing placement of the building on the boundary, you know, if everybody can work together and come up with a curb detail, and everybody's happy and nobody's getting, you know, stormwater infiltration, which is not allowed, right? Then, I think then everybody wins, right?
Yeah, right.
And I think that's, you know, I think that's definitely worthwhile, I would strongly encourage that.
Can I ask a quick question, so on a site, would it help to have a drainage plan on the site plan, or is that, they're kind of two different, different things?
Well, it's not, it's not a new structure, I don't know that we really, we can't really go beyond the scope of work, the scope of work is an interior renovation.
Right.
I think that this, we're talking about drainage, which is on one twenty-six, and they don't want one twenty-four simply to pour tilt the roof in a way that would have distributed water.
Where you're not modifying the roof.
No.
No.
So the question gets to be how, how to manage whatever there is there and how to do that in a way that is accountable, you know, acceptable to both parties.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, there's not really an extensive exterior renovation, so there's no need to have, you know, a stormwater plan. But if it's a concern, just, you know, as you're, as you're reading, you can incorporate any, any sort of details that you agree upon into the.
Yeah, yeah, if you have time, certainly put them on the plan, you know, I mean, it, I don't, if I don't, though, at this point, but, but if you do, you can agree to it and put them on. Obviously it's an interior renovation, so we're not, you know, we kind of want to see what's going on, but we can't make you go beyond the scope of work that you have in front of the board. Anybody have anything else?
Could be, happy to go.
Very good, have a motion, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, alright, thanks, thanks so much, have a good night, have a good night.
Thank you.